All the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025 to order, pursue our business pledge of allegiance, Charles?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item two, public hearing to obtain comment on an ordinance amending the code of town Guilford chapter 247, Article 7 elderly tax relief program. I see a couple of members from the task force, Brian McGlone, good morning, Brian, how you doing? And also Lou, you served on that as well. So what we, as I think we've discussed before at this board, we made some revisions to the elderly tax relief program, which included increasing the upper, the income thresholds, allowing folks to make a little bit more money than they have in the past. For instance, folks with 20 or more years, a married couple, the, the upper income threshold goes from $95,000 to $99,750. As you may recall, there were, the program had not been adjusted since 2008, had not been indexed for inflation, and we continued to run up against appeals related to folks exceeding the threshold after having been in the program for a variety of reasons. Another significant piece of work that changed the way we handle this is for those folks who are on the plan and their income exceeds the allowable limits. The first time that that occurs, I think we call it the get out of jail free card. And what's, what's interesting is those appeals came directly to the Board of Selectment. And then we, you know, we've basically been granting a get out of jail free card during COVID because of this extreme circumstances. And there had been some application of special considerations, particularly as a relates to extraneous medical bills, which necessitated folks digging deeper into reserves and taking income. Where the board felt uncomfortable was these continued asks where appeals, which were not necessarily medical related and not necessarily, and they may not, may have been easily avoided. So the, the program now calls for first time, you get a pass. Second time, you get the discount, which is the average of the previous five years in terms of the discount on your taxes. And then the third, third, third one is three strikes, you're out. So that takes the, takes the evaluation out of the hands of the Board of Selectment. It's not subjective anymore based on each application. And then lastly, I think the, the other major change, which is the one that precipitates us being here today was some language around the qualifying income, which I think was largely at the, at the behest of our assessor. So those are the, the primary changes, those are the, that we are looking at in, in terms of adopting the updated ordinance. I'd open it to either Brian or Lou, or I know Pete's here as well for any comments. Folks?
I, I'll just sort of say, I think that focus of the task force was to try and create a little bit of relief due to the passage of time and the, the threshold at which people could stay and try and create a little bit more room for people to be part of this. And as you say, Matt, to take out the subjective nature of many of the appeals that we were contending with under the previous language, and that the idea being, as you say, the first time, no, no excuse, no explanation necessary. If you go over one time, you go over, second time, there's a penalty for running over two times. You should be aware of the, the, the trigger point, and if it happens again, maybe it happens for a good reason, but third time out of the program, you'd have to reapply and, and, and become eligible at, as if someone who's never been part of the program. So that was, that was the thinking, make it both a bit forgiving, but, but also more objective.
Great. Thanks Lou.
Can we separate it from some of the other programs too?
Yeah.
Yes, we did. I could, the assessor was concerned that there are other programs, for instance, a program for veterans that was folded into the calculations, and those are now going to be separated out and just assessed completely differently. I mean, I think what happened is somebody back soon after this previous program was implemented, essentially folded everything together in, for lack of a better word, a spreadsheet to make the calculations. And the idea is that they should just be assessed differently. They're under different, you know, schedules of eligibility, and the idea is someone could possibly be eligible for one program for some small, in most cases, small benefit. And then the calculations for this program would stand on their own. Great. Thanks Lou. Brian, any comments or?
Honestly, I don't have anything to add. I, I think the, you know, the, the point was, we're trying to make some improvements and, and help people's eligibility to it, and, you know, just fine tune a few points that were in this longstanding program.
Great. Brian, thank you for your work on it, Lou, yours as well. Is there anybody from the public? I'm not sure I see anyone from the public here today with comments. Board members, any comments?
No.
Good. Glad that we, it's gonna become a little clearer for the public and, and clearer for our deliberations, or we'll have fewer deliberations.
Take, take the thinking out of it, of course. That's right. Make, keep it simple stupid. Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing. We have, it's in your board pack, we have one thing to add to the agenda, and that would be permission for use of the town green. Name of the organization is Guilford Foundation. You may have seen, for, for those who came in, those on Zoom, probably not, there's a, is it a flock of penguins, or is it, what is it?
I, I don't know.
Oh my, the librarian.
I know, I'll find out though.
By a local artist who has continued to entertain the community with his wonderful artwork on the green. This came in late Friday, and we did not have an opportunity to add to the agenda. It's in your board pack. Is there a motion to add that as item 12A?
I'll move that, but did we close the public hearing already?
Yes, I just, I just indicated that we'll close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay. And let me try your minds, select, selectman Federici? Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Okay, that's added to the agenda. All right, item three, Kevin, what do we have? Yeah, what's, one more to add to the agenda.
Approval of third-party consultant for Village West.
Oh, oh, I thought we got that in there.
There's a late addition, apologies.
Is that the, the deep?
No, it's separate, yeah.
You bring that, what is it?
Third, the third-party consultant for review for wetlands for Guilford Village West.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Trace, is that up on board pack?
No, Matt.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to add the request from the environmental planner on a, hiring a third-party consultant to review the application for 1940 Boston Post Road, AKA across the street from the rock pile, it's a rather significant development. So is there a motion to add that as 12B?
A second.
A second. Let me try your minds, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. All right, Kevin, thank you for that. All right, public forum? Hearing none, let's move on to approval of minutes. Four dot one, the February 3rd regular meeting, is there a motion? I'll move second. Any comments or questions? Thanks, Lou. Hearing none, let me try your minds, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Select woman Rua?
Aye.
Aye.
Renner.
Aye.
I answered.
There you go, there you go. Those in the room, aye. There you go. Moving on to February 3rd, 2025, special meeting minutes, is there a motion?
Some move.
Add a second. Comments, questions? Let me try your minds, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries. Four dot three, February 4th, 2025, special meeting minutes, is there a motion?
Some move.
Add a second. Any comments, questions, suggested changes? Hearing none, let me try your minds, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries. Item five, finance director, Mary Jane Malvasi, five dot one, receive monthly report from the finance director. MJ, good morning.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Awesome. Okay, many of you heard my report the other night through the board of finance, so we're doing this backwards this month. But I'll start with revenues. Revenues are currently at 90.8% compared to 92.2% last year, to remember, we did increase some of the budgets for revenue, which causes that variance. Just want to note also that fire department is at 82% of their revenue already. I had a conversation with the fire commission chair the other day, and, and he indicated that every month, the number of calls are increasing, so that makes up the reason for that revenue. Any questions on revenue? Otherwise, everyone seems to be, okay?
I do have, I have a question on revenue, Mary Jane, that question I should have probably asked seven years ago, so I apologize for that, but how does, how does the monthly revenue in the building department on this report relate to that report we receive every month of the building permits? I've never understood how they interacted, and now with, with, you know, the, the additional staffing and so on that we discussed during our budget sessions, I'd like to understand that better. This report shows for the month of January, $40,000 in the building department, but I, the other, other report shows 52, it shows 197 permits and 50, 55,000. Should they, should there be a correlation?
I'd have to look a little bit more into that before I answer that question, but very often, there's a timing issue of when they record their permits coming in, and then with, with the revenue. But let me get back to, on, on that question, and see if we can, I can answer that more intelligently.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, I was mostly interested in the number of permits, because of all of our discussion, and then I thought, well, let me make sure I'm looking at apples and apples, and that's why I started, so thank you.
No problem.
Anything else on the ordinance? Hearing none, do you want to go to expenses?
Yeah, on, on the expenditure side, we are just about where we were last year at this time. Most of the departments that are more than the 58% through the year as the end of January are due to timing issues. For instance, in the finance department, for me, you know, we've paid for our audit already, so that it puts us a little bit over that, that amount. We work our way down to fire, you'll see fire is at 65% with $135,000 in encumbrances, but again, they are 82% through their revenue, that call volume translates over to the expenditure side as well. Two items we have overdrawn at the moment, so to speak, the first is capital, we do have a number of items in capital that through the budget season last year, we had agreed to pay from fund balance, the expenditures do come out through here, and at the end of the year, we will make those whole. And the last item is debt, we do have our final debt payment in this month of February. Once that is complete, the overage is the premium credits that we take from fund balance to mitigate the increase in debt, so we will be making that whole as well. If anybody has any other specific questions?
Anyone? You'll learn. All right, anything on warrants, or do you want to go straight to medical? Medical?
All right, on the medical side, we did have some good news in the month of January, we received approximately $400,000 of reimbursements from the stop-loss company. If you can remember, I've mentioned the last couple of months that we have this receivable in from the stop-loss, that's always a month or so behind. We've brought in $627,000 already in fiscal year 25 for this, we do have some still outstanding, but that was good news for January, which, if you look at the claims for January, that $400,000 credit is applied to those claims since the expense is from other months. So January may look like a better month, but if you were to add back that $400,000, we're back up to 1.6 million in January as well. The, the $400,000 is, would be better split out between each of the months. Unfortunately, that is adding to our projected deficit in the medical fund at this point, bringing our fund balance down to only 3.1 million. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I, you got, let me make sure I understand some of the numbers on, on, on this report here. We have the ISL premium and amount covered by that insurance, okay? So the stop-loss, to this point, is 683,000, and this past month, we received 400,000 of that?
Correct, we've received 627,000 altogether in fiscal year 25, but there is a carryover from last year as well, so there's not a one-to-one correlation in this particular year.
And if and to the extent that folks who have, are, have hit that, we would continue to get reimbursed from the insurance. On the other hand, if one of those folks, hopefully, is better, no more treatment, that ends, they, you know, that payment only continues to get made per contract that goes over the limit on the, on the stop-loss, right?
Correct, so if a stop, if, if someone goes over their limit, say in September, then every expense they have for the rest of the fiscal year is covered by stop-loss.
I got it, okay.
And then, so the, the minute they hit that stop-loss for the fiscal year, everything is covered after that.
Right, but, 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 okay, I got it. But, but to the extent that we're receiving other claims from other folks, and they're within, underneath the stop-loss triggering amount, we're still paying that, we're still paying that full amount?
Correct, we don't get reimbursed until they hit the $150,000.
Okay.
So if someone stays at 149 for the year, then we get nothing back.
Well, why is it for the month? And, and, and we, no, cumulatively, we're 1.8, that, that 1.8 under the fund balance projection, 1.8 million is cumulative amount of deficit for the year?
Yes.
Okay, and despite the fact that we received this 400,000, that, that didn't get reduced by some amount, or did it? Was the previous month more than 1.8?
It, it would all have been tied in, so all the numbers are, it's a net amount of everything.
Okay.
And, and that's projected, so that takes into account what we think's gonna happen the rest of the year. It's not cash value as of the end of January.
Okay. All right, well, we'll keep an eye on that over the next couple of months, I got it. Thank you, I'm on the phone, Jules.
Anything further from Mary Jane? All right, MJ, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item six, police department, Lieutenant Kirk Fazal, six dot one, discuss and take possible action on purchasing evidence room storage system. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good, how are you? So this is part of a two-part project we were looking to do, you know, with the changes in laws with respect to the red flag laws and domestic violence laws, we're taking in a lot more firearms than we had previously. When the building was built, our current capacity for storing firearms is, there's 30 long gun slots, and there's 27 handgun slots. We currently have about 200 long guns and about 100 handguns in our evidence area. So it's a partitioned small area, that also houses ammunition or any high dollar valuables, so jewelry, et cetera, drugs are all stored in the same area. So we made it work, we're long overdue for this. So the first part of the project was purchasing the wire partition area, so we repurposed the section of the evidence room, wire partition, so it's locked, and then this is the second part, we're looking to do the actual organization aspect, which is the firearm storage lockers. So this is gonna give us the capability to store 120 long guns and 160 handguns, much more organized, and I think, you know, a little bit better as far as how we're storing them with respect to respecting people's property, et cetera. We also, this is identified as efficiency for us with accreditation. Our accreditation just took place a few months ago, they identified this as, as a deficiency with respect to our policy. They did, you know, give us a little leeway because we are in the process of updating it, but this is the final step. We did obtain three quotes. Data storage solutions was actually the most responsive, they worked up a few different options for us. This open storage system is what I think is gonna be the best for us, moving forward, also has the capability to give us a little bit of shelving to store ammunition in there as well. So we are looking to get approval to move forward with their suggested quote, and move forward with that as a vendor.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move it, second.
Second.
Go ahead. I, I know that there's some renovations coming down the pipe for the building overall, how does this fit into that? Will this be something that, you know, is it gonna be fire bid, or I don't want to do something now that's going to?
Correct, yeah, so the evidence room is not actually part of the upgrade. We are actually kind of changed course on that, we're gonna do a needs survey, so potentially it could be, if there's a change, but with respect to what we had planned to do and identify as our needs, no, the evidence room is, is gonna stay its current.
Location where it is, but.
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
And I, I forgot the exact numbers that you said that, that the new area will hold, but I mean, do you think that's going to suffice for five or 10 years, or how long?
Right, I, I think in my experience, tends to be when these new laws are put into place, we overcorrect and tend to maybe take in more things, and, and people use it more often because they want to make sure they're not overlooking things. But in my experience, and then looking back at the numbers, I think the 120 for long guns, even though we're at about 200 right now, that 200 figure also takes into account the firearm destruction for the gun buybacks that we've done, that have not been destroyed yet, we actually have to make an appointment with state to bring those up, so that's typically around 100 long guns, but I'd say the 120 long guns and 160 handguns, and then also still having the old area where we can store stuff as well, should suffice for foreseeable future.
That was gonna be my next question, I mean, we're not just storing these things forever, there is a turnover, right?
Correct, yes, so as long as the order is taken into place, if the order remains, we're required to house it. Once the order is released, they have a year to come get it, and, and we'll reach out to them once we realize that the orders are, are no longer in place. After a year, then we bring it up to the state lab for destruction, the state license center. So, you know, so a lot of these orders stay in place for years and years, yeah, and then, you know, we also get somewhere, found property, et cetera, evidence, et cetera, so those, those will stay in place until the resolution of the case, which can be years as well.
Yeah, I, notwithstanding the gun buyback stuff, the numbers are somewhat surprising to me, this is an aspect of our community we don't hear very much about, and it just, it just talks to the breadth of the things that the police department does and is responsible for. Many of these are DV cases, right, domestic violence cases, et cetera, mostly, and to see those kind of numbers is somewhat surprising, I don't know if anybody else feels the same way, but we are not immune from the problems that are going on throughout the world, and just because we don't hear about it too often, doesn't mean it isn't taking place, so, again, great work by the, by the PD, so, anybody, Sue or Lou?
Yeah. I just, my only question was like, what happens at the end of the process? At what point do people, if ever, get to claim their property back?
Yeah, there's quite a few different scenarios, you know, if it's domestic violence case and their restraining or protective order is, is released by the judge and the case dismissed, the person can arrange with us to, to retrieve the firearms, if they don't have the pistol permit back, they have to have somebody who has a valid pistol permit accompany them to the PD so that they can properly transport that back to their private residence. You know, some of the criminal cases will get orders from the judge to either return the firearm, or destroy it, or they can also sell it to a federal firearms license dealer, so an FFL. There's, there's quite a few different scenarios, but typically, that's what we see, is either destruction order, an order to return it, or, you know, they sell it to an FFL, so it's no longer in their possession.
So there's due process, people have recourse to the courts, or if in some cases, they get ordered to, that's it, they're done, they can't get it back?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Everything we held is, is, is under process.
When you say they sell it, who is that?
The owner is able to work with the federal firearms license dealer to arrange to have it sold, so they arrange it, we get the federal firearms licensee will come in, they assign all the paperwork. No, it's not, it's not.
We, we, we went through that about a year ago.
Destroying, yeah, good. Anything further? All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the award of the contract for two data storage solutions for the equipment as described earlier by Lieutenant Fazal, an amount of $8,847. Let me try your minds, selectman Federici?
Aye.
Select woman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Can I just?
Certainly.
Yes, the, so the amount is actually the 12,763.
It is, okay, well, it wasn't part of the original motion.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I was looking at the.
Yes, the quote, yeah, the quote, if you add the installation of freight.
Yeah, that's correct, so, corrected, the motion was, the motion was without the amount, but, so the, the amount is 12,763.48, that's right, thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You got it. Good day.
Matt, I gotta take a quick break, Pam, sorry, I will jump right back in.
Nothing you said, Pam. All right, item seven, parking wreck director, Pam Gary, seven dot one, consider and take possible action to waive section 214 dash 2A of the town code, allowing the serving of ceremonial wine as part of a community center regal, although I have two items on the board pack, right? Okay, well, that's it, okay. All right, Pam, what is yours?
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, so this is a Jehovah Witness group that has requested to use our facility, and they have a ceremonial wine, it's, I, I've told, it's very brief, it's at the end of their rental, it is not a happy hour type of thing, and I certainly think it's, it's, it's fine, it'd be an okay thing to do, but I'm gonna go through the, the process here and get approvals.
Great, thanks Pam. I, 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 I think this is a reasonable allowance for religious ceremony, there are several, several congregations, different congregations that utilize wine as part of their ceremonies, and I would think that any, anyone who was requesting something like this should be granted the leeway to continue their practices, so I don't have a problem with it. Anyone else, Sue, or anybody?
I have, I do have, I just have a question, in the letter from the group, they state that, they say we will shortly be making application to the Guilford Board of Selectment for approval of the use of ceremonial wine, when we, I don't think that's part of our packet, so if they're planning on doing it, I know this has been a couple of months away, shall we wait and receive?
Yeah, that's a good question, Sue, I, I don't know that we actually have an application waiver for that.
I, I seem to remember on a case-by-case basis.
I I I seem to remember on a case by case basis, um after the library was renovated, wanted to do a little function for um. Larger donors and it was after hours, but we still wanted to serve some wine and we came. On an individual case to select and asked.
Yeah, okay, so.
So so the question is. Go ahead, Sue.
So this is all we're gonna be receiving, most likely?
Yeah, I I think so, I think the applicant here is actually Park and Rec, um if you if you wanna. Technically say that they're the ones asking for waiver of the policy, um. Because I don't, I again, I don't recall us having a formal document, um which. But which we probably should uh consider, let me.
Yeah, I mean, we tabled it on the green.
Yeah.
Right. But I don't remember a specific document, it was a request.
I think that was, I think that was embedded in the application for use of the green.
I'm not against this, the only thing that might, I'm I'm wondering that might come up as part of public thinking about this or whatever. Is um the business about anybody under twenty one not having, taking part in it? Or of it, with it?
The the essence I'd like to know is.
State and all that kind of stuff.
Sue?
Yeah. There are, I was going to add, there are licensing requirements, I don't know how, I don't know what they are. Um and I'd also be interested in knowing what time of day this is gonna be, what else is going on there? And things like that, I mean, we do have an ordinance that prohibits this, so I think we should ask a few questions before we go ahead and wait.
It doesn't sound like they're selling it.
No.
They're not selling it, so it. Probably the mechanics of it might be explored a little bit more for future, just to.
Pam, do you know when it is, do you know what time of day, or is it the weekend?
I believe it's, I believe it's like uh one to five. Um I'm not completely certain, but that's what I I believe. Um but apparently it's it's an incredibly brief formal ending of the ceremony. And from what I understand. I don't think anybody ev- even sips it, it's just part of the formal process.
But we don't really know, like, why not?
Showing my ignorance on uh Jehovah's uh Jehovah Jehovah Witness uh be uh behaviors in general, which. I always thought they were teetotalers, but um not not Jehovah's.
Not, not the ones I knew. I'm I'm not, I'm I'm just stating a fact.
Right, I I I I would think that uh we we pro- we probably have time, uh if we if we're not comfortable with it, if there are some specific questions. You'd like Pam to ask of them, uh who would partake, is it, and and what uh what? What assurances do we have that no one under uh underage is going to take, you know, gonna take part in the consumption of the of the wine? But.
You know, those questions are fine, I I'm comfortable with this particular request. I do think Susan brings up a point that maybe we can explore going forward. A a procedure for approving things, I guess, whether it be an application process. Or just a form, you know, that would answer these questions, you know, age and sale and.
Right.
That equality and that type of stuff.
Right, I I think that's something, uh I'm assuming that they've actually had to put an application in for use of the room itself, Pam, is that the case?
Correct.
So that might, that might be the appropriate vehicle to add these kind of questions to, if it uh if 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 that is part of it. I don't wanna necessarily put it on the application to suggest that it's, you know, uh.
Yeah, like it's something we approve generally because we don't.
All right.
Well, it'd be a form that we could use at any.
Any, any, you're right.
Some of the museums have events and that type of thing, and they have to go through a process.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Would you like?
Go ahead, Sue.
I was like, which room are they using?
Uh the Guilford Whitfield Room, the large room.
The large room with the windows.
With the windows, yeah.
Okay.
Mike, are you all set, Sue?
Yeah.
Sorry, but um Pam, my question was, I, it says it's the Westbrook congregation, I'm presuming it's a regional congregation. And that it's open to folks from Guilford, and it just happens to be a location, it's not, it's not like an existing. Group of folks from Westbrook are just gonna be coming here, is this a, I mean, why are we getting involved with an out of town? Group like this, I guess is my question, or any group that's not from Guilford?
Uh we, well, we do have many groups that are not from Guilford, that rent our facility, um. That's all I know, I know there are many, like, there's like the Bean Society that comes in and uses our facility, they're from Middletown. But there's people from all over.
That would be a draw from everywhere, as as well as Guilford, I I guess my 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 question is with. And I have no, because I know other religious organizations have used the space, and that's fine, but I mean, it's it's use the space to service. Our, you know, folks here as well as possibly, like every every potential congregation doesn't draw necessarily from one location, but. I'm kind of wondering. Why they're on, why they're looking for our space, is what it comes down to, servicing folks in this area as well as. From down, up and down the shoreline?
Great question, I think what I'm gonna have to do is take these questions today and put them in a. Would you like me to come back to a board of select meeting to answer these questions? Or put it in a?
One suggestion is to ask, ask the group to just write us a letter explaining some of these things.
Okay. That's easy.
What what's the sentiment, are we waiting for that uh letter to show up to deliberate and make a decision, or can we make the decision? With the information to follow as informational?
I'm comfortable with this particular application, like I said, going forward, you know, maybe if we can procedurally. Set up a process that would answer some of these questions more clearly would be good, but I have no problem.
When is this event happening?
It's April twelfth. So I mean, we do have time, I mean, I I don't I don't wanna prejudice uh in some planning.
Yeah, but if it's only a month away, they've got their own plans to put together.
Right, because if if they, if they're unsure whether they're gonna be able to utilize a facility for the purposes that they are outlined. Another two weeks may push them into looking for a different facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have no intention of, I don't think anybody here has any intention of denying it, we just feel like we weren't provided with enough information.
Right.
That's, that's fair.
Well, maybe just give, what did you say you preferred, Susan, I'm sorry?
I prefer to wait and add it to the next agenda.
Actually, two months away.
Next meeting is March fourth, I think, our next meeting, so that's still six weeks, almost six weeks out from there.
Right, all right, um how about the following, um we'll 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 take, we'll we'll table, we'll table it, we'll authorize Pam to let them know. That the Board of Selectmen has to a member suggested this is going to be allowed, so you can count on the date. It's just pending further information from them relative to the event, uh and it is not uh of of concern. Should not be of concern to them that they won't be able to uh rent the facility, is that, does that work?
Yeah.
It's accurate.
Yeah.
I actually thought the gentleman was gonna be on this Zoom today, I actually did, so so coming back, I I'll I'll request that he's on. Because that way, if you think of something else that you wanna ask him, he'll be available.
Be there, that's great.
Great idea.
All right, all right, so then is there a motion to the table? Yeah, the second, okay, uh for the comments or questions. Uh Pam, just make sure that they they fully understand that is the intention of the board to move forward with approval pending the satisfactory. Uh um supply.
Clarification.
Clarifications, that's right.
Of course.
Good, all right, uh we have a motion uh to table, all in favor, Selectwoman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries, thank you. Pam, in the letter that you had sent over, you had something on the use of the town green approval to host a new bluegrass country festival. On Saturday, July twenty six, twenty twenty five, I didn't see that on the uh on our online documentation, um. Is that something you would like us to consider at this point, um?
Yes.
An add to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
How will we add it to the agenda?
Second.
Second, uh let me try your minds on adding it to the agenda and uh for immediate discussion, um aye. Selectwoman Federici, Selectwoman Renner, in the room, aye.
Aye.
All right, Pam, you want to just tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, based on our survey results, um asking the residents of Guilford. What type of genre they would like for the concerts on the green, um we had several, we had twenty, almost twenty five hundred responses. Um about concerts and um a large number of those responses were looking for some sort of bluegrass country, so we thought, why not add it? So Saturday, the twenty sixth is, um we're we're, we have a concert committee for the first time set up. So the concert committee will be part of this um event as well. Um but we chose this date because we already have one um country band called the Hazard County. Set up for Sunday, the twenty seventh, and July twenty sixth would be great because if there's a rain. Date for that event, we can al- already go to the Sunday, which we already have a country, country band lined up, so. We're looking to work with the community dining room on this event, as well as even Green Stage. Uh Peter, uh I'm forgetting his last name, he also got involved, yes. Right, so he's also very interested in working with us on this, and we're also looking to do some sort of chicken wing. Um kind of event with it, um we'll get all the restaurants involved to produce their best. Wing ding, if you will, um so we're looking at strings and wings.
Love it.
Sounds great.
It's uh Saturday, July twenty sixth, put that together, that should be fun. So when you say bluegrass country festivals, it's more than one band, is it just?
We're looking at more than one, yes, with probably three, we're looking at three. So maybe something like four to eight or five to eight to start, and if it continues to be really popular, we can grow from there and maybe have a country weekend. In the in the future.
I like it. Many years ago in my youth, at least, that uh I used to attend the uh the Hartford Bluegrass Festival pretty regularly, which was. A phenomenally well-attended event, uh.
I think North Guilford has.
And North Guilford does something, something as well as well, great.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, uh is there a motion, uh we have a motion?
Some vote.
Hang on a second.
Second.
Uh any further comments or questions? Uh let me try your minds, Selectwoman Federici?
Aye.
Uh Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries, Pam, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight, Kevin, this is number one for you, right?
Yep.
Uh right, uh discuss to take possible action on a resolution authorizing the first selectmen to sign all documents. Related to a deep invasive aquatic plant management grant award for Lake Quantapod, Kevin?
So, back to the beginning of the year, I was saying the last year, we submitted a grant to kind of a DEP for invasive aquatic plant management. Um for Lake Quantapod, um this grant um we put in for is a fifty fifty um batch. Uh so we just were noted or noticed that we awarded twenty two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from the state. Um to help with our treatment of invasives like Quantapod, um the town would then have to fund this equal amount, twenty two nine fifty. For our half of the grant there, this grant is to cover our um. The treatment for calendar year twenty uh twenty twenty six. Um since we have one in place, which will be utilized for the twenty twenty five year.
Excellent.
Um due to, and actually the states actually moved quicker this year than before, um they usually awarded these things like in June. Um when you really can't really coordinate all the activities, so we have been setting these things up, so we're. On top of the calendar year uh for these grants here, so um this one will cover the, like I said, the twenty twenty six calendar year for for treatment of lake.
Great.
Um it'll be, like I said, um half the amount there is uh what they're covering for us there, it's a fairly competitive uh grant.
Grant, yeah, well, nice job on securing this, Kevin, and uh I believe as we had our budget discussions recently, we contemplated or. Hoped to get this, so it is, it is baked in to your budget for uh twenty five, twenty six, so that's run out of state. Good job.
So as part of the grant award, um uh requires a resolution from the uh top official in town. To sign all required documents, and that's what we have in front of you.
You got it, thank you very much. Both, second. Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, uh Selectwoman Federici?
Aye.
Uh Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, Kevin, thank you. Uh you'll be back up in a minute.
Yep.
Uh consider to take possible action on a resolution authorizing the first selectman to sign documents related to a steep grant application for the Guilford Housing Authorities. Boston Terrace Project, just a little bit of background, we haven't received a steep award in a little, sometime, um we had been um. We had tried to submit one, we did submit one last year, I think it was two years ago for for a new roof for, I think it's a Boston Terrace location, I'm not sure. Uh but nonetheless, uh the steep grant would go towards uh the 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 housing authorities. Boston Terrace Roofing Project and some related activities, so, so is there a motion to uh authorize uh? The first like we decided, documents?
Some.
Second. Thank you, Sue, um any comments or questions? Let me try your minds, Selectwoman Federici?
Aye.
Uh Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? That motion carries. All right, uh item ten, uh which is an application uh for noise control ordinance variance, and that would be. Um for the Care Fest on June fourteenth, twenty twenty five, which is the annual Paul Dosty Care Foundation event. Uh and fundraiser, is there a motion to uh accept the application, it's uh. Ben signed off by Chief Massey and Rupert Chief Massey, is there a motion?
Some vote.
Some vote.
All right, any comments or questions? Let me try your minds, uh Selectwoman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. All right, item eleven, discuss to take possible action to approve an ordinance amending chapter two forty seven, article seven, elderly tax leave program. As a result of the earlier public hearing, um given the significant amount of input we received, I don't think we're changing our direction at this point. Um is is there a motion to approve uh the amended, the ordinance amending chapter two forty seven, article seven? Uh elderly tax leave program?
I'd like to put forth that motion.
Thank you, and second, 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 further comments or questions? Only thing I'll mention again is uh Brian, Lou, and the balance of that task force for the great work. And also the expeditious nature which you carried out that charge, um just proves that occasionally. Uh government can move at a faster pace than the glacial movement, so. Really, was.
I think we should give them some other jobs.
Nicely done, Lou.
They like it, I like it, all right, let me try your minds, Selectwoman Federici?
Aye.
Uh Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room? Aye, that motion carries, thank you. Um item twelve, consider to take possible action designating March twenty twenty five as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. Uh this came to my attention through uh uh through the governor, through the governor's office originally. Uh who has already signed off on this, as are many other communities throughout the state, uh gambling, uh legalized gambling is uh. It it is is wonderful for some and not so good for other people, and those who have struggles, um uh. Can benefit by uh increased awareness and and uh of opportunities to to help yourself with those kind of challenges. So is there a motion?
Some vote.
Yeah, second, any further comments or questions? Lou, this wouldn't be you, you you didn't bet on the Eagles in the Super Bowl, did you?
I did not, I I'd like to watch some of our friends bet, but I I would rather watch the game and enjoy it, most years.
That's just kidding, all right, let me try your minds, Selectwoman Federici?
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner?
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
That motion carries, thank you, um. Okay, item twelve A, which is uh a permission for use of the town green. Uh the person in charge of the event uh is submitting it in traditional uh. Fashion, which is uh prefers not to be identified, but the name of the organization uh is. Uh on behalf of the Guilford Foundation, so any proceeds, we'll go to that, and that is the display of Penguin's Flock, or what?
Um well, if they're on the land, if they're on the water, they're a raft, but if they're on the land, they're a waddle, so approving a waddle. So approving a waddle and, and wins today.
There we go. That's a motion.
I make very important contributions to this board.
And a second. All right, uh, any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds. Selectman uh, Federici.
Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Uh, those in the room? Thank you very much. Waddle. Let's waddle on out there and take a look. Um, all right, uh, item twelve B, and uh, environmental planner Kevin McGee, come on up. Uh. The inland wetlands commission is uh, asking us to approve uh, the award of a contract as to a third-party consulting, engineering consulting firm. To evaluate uh, the inland wetlands impacts uh, of. Uh, one of the more substantial uh, uh, housing development projects uh, that will have occurred uh, in Guilford uh, in many, many years. So Kevin?
Can I steal it back from you for a second? And it's actually um, mixed in here is actually two consultants, one civil engineering and one is a wetland specialist. To do the evaluation. And background for everybody here, uh, the inland wetlands commission is reviewing a application for nineteen forty Boston Place Road LLC. Uh, for an updated development of the Gilbert Village West um, development, which was originally approved back in twenty-ten. Um, the new development is going to consist is proposed to contain one hundred and sixty-two residential multifamily dwellings within four buildings. Commercial development with three proposed buildings, uh, proposed parking. Sanitary and stormwater systems, um, site grading, roadways, installation of utilities, passive active recreation. The inland wetlands commission, as January eighth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, voted to make the application a significant application with a complex application fee. Uh, we declare in the application a complex application fee in accordance to the Town of Guilford Code. Chapter one sixty-six fees, article three, the inland wetlands commission will need to collect a fee from the applicant for a third-party review and submit documents for potential impacts to the. On the adjacent wetlands and waterfront pools. Um, so as part of this, we solicited um, solicitations were sent out to. I believe it's five or so um, uh, civil engineering firms. And another four or so of just plain wetlands um, companies. Um, we've received one proposal back for the engineering services for the civil, co-dispondent associates. Um, they. Proposed a fee of um, an estimated fee, should we say, uh, this is based on hours of twenty-three thousand one hundred dollars. Um, the two, and then we also received two proposals for a wetland specialist uh, out of five that were sent out there. And the proposal for, came back from Rema Ecological Services for five thousand one ninety-six forty. And environmental land solutions for eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, wetlands commission voted at their meeting in Ja- February twelfth. Uh, to con- contract with co-dispondent associates to be the engineering consultant on the project and Rema Ecological Services to be the wetlands consultant. Um, commission is looking for the board selecting to approve the proposal for co-dispondent associates for an estimated cost of twenty-three thousand one hundred. Based on early rate in Rema Ecological Services. Uh, for five thousand one ninety-six forty plus hourly fees beyond that point of review.
Okay, thank you. Uh, for the purpose of discussion, um, is there a motion to approve uh, the awards? And a second. Um, Kevin, thank you very much for this. Uh, this is obviously a significant uh, project uh, that's been. On the books for twenty-some odd years. It was originally approved as a age-restricted development by, I believe, the Russo, uh, by, by one of the Russos, if not. That age restriction was pulled off several years ago. Uh, and now what they're looking to do is what, a hundred and sixty-six apartments?
Uh, a hundred and sixty-two dwelling units. Yes, yeah, a hundred and fifty-two.
That's on the back part of the parcel, right?
Rear portion, yeah.
And the front portion is uh, gonna be.
Commercial development across from the.
So, so they will do work specifically on which pieces? At both, the impact of both?
The whole thing, yeah, the whole thing. This is, uh, last time the proposal was just for the residential. This application now is for the whole development of commercial by the road, uh, with the three commercial buildings. And then the residential buildings in the rear. Um, past five, six years, this thing's been sort of mined out um, by Terri- Terri Hill Construction there. Um, erosion controls were uh, uh, monitored by third-party consultant there. Uh, actually. Not third-party, because actually it's through a required specialist through the contractor there to do monitoring, which was then. Um, quality control by myself at times popping out there, making certain sure things are actually, the reports we're getting are actually what's. What's happening out there. Um, so there was some monitoring, at least on the wetland side of it for this. Uh, existing work, but there's still a lot more work to happen in there in terms of getting the site down to correct grade. Um, everything's rock now. They're gonna be dumping topsoil and stuff on top of rocks. There's a lot of removals. Soil that needs to be watched out for is during the co- project there. And the original proposal noted there is a quite a few um, frontal pools near adjacent to these projects there. Um, a lot of the work is on a top of a hill, which is um, that's typical things in Guilford, which led slope down towards wetlands.
Got it, got it. Um, uh, this is a, a not unusual request by former municipalities. It's, it's allowed in state statutes, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and the cost is borne by the developer.
Correct. Yep, they're required to give us um, the estimated cost plus ten percent, just in case there's some overages there. Um, co-dispondent associates has done two reviews already for the commission. Um, they reviewed the uh, Long Hill Estates East subdivision, which is uh, big lies construction up by, above, and they reviewed that for the commission. And they also did the review for the Hubbard Road um, um, develop housing development um, also there. So they. It's two reviews they did. Commission is very pleased with their work there.
So thi- this is a move made by many municipalities who don't have staff, in-house staff, who can evaluate a project, who have the. Capacity to evaluate a project of this magnitude with that amount of a, of potential impact to the environmental, uh, the, the area environmentally. Uh, we hear an awful lot, uh, I hear an awful lot of stuff about um, regulations adding to the cost of development and driving the costs up. Um, clearly, this is what, thirty thousand dollars, uh, thirty thousand dollars, which is probably going to be a drop in the bucket related to this particular project. But. What, what it does is it buys the, the, the community, uh, the, the ability to ensure that significant disruptions to uh, the. Uh, the, the wetlands and, and other aspects of environmental concern uh, are, are taken care of. What I want to understand, and this is kind of interesting, you know, theoretically, a, a developer is paying for. Something that could be detrimental to their project.
Get some negative results.
And, and there was, there, there was some, there have been accusations of that saying that, so that, that this is sometimes a tool. To dissuade developers from moving forward. Uh, I think we heard something about that, we, uh, the, the Hubbard Road. Application and so forth. Uh, but the intention here is to, to preserve the integrity of the environment to the degree that you can. Knowing that there will be some disruptions based on the nature of just doing that kind of work. There, there already have been, right?
Correct, there's already been work on that there, correct?
Et cetera. So, but this is specific to the inland, to inland.
Actually, this actually, the work conducted by the consultants here, especially the civil engineer. Would be carried out through the planning and zoning process of, okay? Cause they're reviewing um, the major impacts on a development like this. Um, really comes down to kind of two major things. Soil erosion control measures and stormwater. Um, which protect the wetlands and also adjacent properties. Even if there's not wetlands, if you have erosion control methods in property or. And you don't properly review stormwater, somebody's property can get additional stormwater, which they were never getting before, which then. Um, once it gets developed, um, our offices gets calls from the neighbors saying, I'm getting extra water in my property. Never had this stuff. So it's a third-party looking at this thing, um, um, protecting the neighbors and actually making sure they're in compliance with our. Um, our zoning regulations. Actually, now it's the state's uh, manual for erosion, sediment control measures and the new stormwater manual they have there. So they're. Evaluating all this to those um, those standards there. So. Um, through the review processes, actually here, sometimes you have the negatives, oh my God, it's costing me money, I'm doing this. Um. But if you really um, get down to it, a lot of the engineers there, third-party reviews, especially this big project, help bring up problems which. Our engineers may miss. There are these plans that are in front of us all the time that they're not catching a, a mi- a, a problem which they may have put in there. Um, so it's a second set of eyes on it. Um, there's about seventy pages of plans in the plan set, which. Um, are put together, which even the consultant's engineer, I mean, there's something that. Um, you think you corrected, but you didn't, because your mind is, in your mind reads something that. That's correct and you're, you're thinking it's correct, where it's a, the second press.
You're too, you're too close to it. You're too close to it.
Correct. And it's, 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 and they find stuff which improve the project there.
Got it, got it. All right, I have a monopolized question. Is anybody else?
Could you, um, this is not necessarily right under your direct purview, but you know, this is a, is something that's gonna become more. Citizens are gonna become more and more aware of this project. Um, you just repeat again, it's a hundred and forty-six in.
Hundred and sixty-two residential multifamily dwelling units.
In, in how many buildings?
Four buildings.
Okay. And do you know how many bedrooms?
I do not have that information.
Except one and two, I think it's uh, two, one and some studios.
Two ones. And are they, um, and John, you might know this, are, are, are they uh, allowing any to um, be, are they designating any to be affordable?
I can't say a hundred percent. I'm not sure that um, they are going affordable, although the studios will be lower, lower priced.
Yeah, but then, but then we have that.
We have the twelve percent.
We have that twelve percent uh, fee in lieu of um, affordable. So, cause and this is a large enough project that it would qualify for that, for sure. So.
They put in application plans, only so maybe in their paperwork, typically that would be part of their.
Right.
Application for this type of thing.
Okay.
Uh, place on that, remember that.
So forty units in each, roughly, right? Am I figuring it out there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many stories?
Um, there's a garage level underneath and I think. Probably three or, three or four there. It'd be like, probably similar to, my guess, similar to um, High Street there. And my guess is I have a. One of the, the plan sets there, for the, for the architectural there.
Quick math says that they will be required, if it's a hundred and sixty-two units, they'll be required to have twelve percent, uh, with a twelve percent setup side. That's nineteen point four-four. So I guess you can round down, but nineteen or twenty affordable housing units. If they elect not to do so, uh, they will contribute a fee in lieu of.
Affordable housing trust.
Which will potentially start to, to build the affordable housing trust fund if they opt not to do so. Any uh, other questions? No, all right, uh, motion on the table? Let me try your, anything else, Kevin?
No, that's it, sir.
That's it, all right. Uh, let me try your minds. Selectman Federici.
Thanks, Kevin. Aye.
Selectwoman Renner.
Aye.
Those in the room?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you for, sorry about last minute there.
No problem. Um, is that app, that application being received this week?
No, uh, for P and Z maybe, but we received this back in. February, I believe, the commission. Received this one, yeah.
Okay. And it's now, uh, in the wetlands, right?
In the wetlands, so it'll be starting our public hearing in March twelfth.
Right. What's the timeframe on getting this third-party review done and completed?
As soon as we can get them on board there. Uh, it's gonna take them, they figure four weeks for their, for their review. Um. I'm hoping they can get most of it done before the first public hearing there.
Got it. Great. All right, thank you. Um, committee reports.
I think, yeah, we're just chugging along.
David, can I actually ask you about that?
Sure.
What's? What's the first properties likely to come online that are in the pipeline?
Well, the Woodruff property, you know, it's, it's been taking.
There's been some movement.
Yeah, there's been some movement. Um, they've finally submitting um, some of the uh, uh, requirements and, and uh, information regarding the. Issues that DEEP brings up about the floodplain, et cetera. We're having a meeting today and we're gonna finally get some. Plans uh, and some pictures of these uh, site requirements um, that have been taking a while to do because of changes and getting the various engineers out there. Soil sampling uh, person and some, and some other people that need to do certain technical work before the. Neighbor works could submit it to DEEP.
So it's the, there's so no shovels in the ground, but all the necessary engineering, legal.
It's finally, I would, I, I hate to, you know, be too positive. I'd like to be positive, but. Um, I, I would say that things are, are uh, uh, going to the next level at least, finally, and.
Fantastic.
Yes, yeah.
They, they were, they, they, they were caught, caught off guard to some degree, um, because of the. Uh, being unaware of the difference uh, between the hundred-year floodplain and the five-hundred-year floodplain. Uh, the original, original design contemplated five-hundred-year, um, when in fact it's uh, one-hundred-year. Uh, and the developer was loath to go back to DEP until they were a hundred percent sure. Uh, that their, uh, their professional team understood the, the ramifications, implications. So they didn't want to have to apply three times at DEP. So, uh, so that's, that's been taken care of. There's also uh, so a, a little bit of movement on the Sawmill Road property. Um, we uh, uh, are moving forward with some environmental testing. Uh, we have uh, uh, we have secured the appropriate documents on uh, surveys. Uh, and title work uh, in order to have that information ready to go when we go out to RFP for a preferred developer for that property. And remember, we still have a, a commitment of a, a million dollars in state uh, bond funding. Uh, which was an exchange for uh, the CDVG uh, uh, housing money that we uh, that we, award that we won. Uh, a year and a half ago. So it's still out there. That would be the next project that's coming up. Then I believe.
How many, how many units there, man?
Uh, that's probably only gonna be six, uh, six or eight, uh, units, similar to the uh, Gray Hill Cottage Development. Uh, as planned, we, we anticipate that it'll be homeownership. Uh, one of the things that uh, we're gonna try to do now, that it is uh, as of right. Um, and if you build this uh, septic capacity appropriately, these uh, these cottage units may also allow for eighty U's. Uh, on the same, uh, on the same properties. So, uh, it'll probably, it'll probably require subdivision of the lots. Um, but uh, the, the, that, that million dollars of pre-development money work will more than likely cover. Um, most of the expenses for us to get ready to go to RFP. Uh, and then I believe the Affordable Housing Commission is, is working uh, to ident- with Kevin McGee. And others to try to identify uh, parcels in town. Uh, for us to try to promote uh, affordable housing developments. And I know they've reached out to. Uh, several of the affordable housing or even regular housing developers who. Do somewhat affordable housing, uh, and, and are not afraid to, uh, to, to incorporate affordable housing. In their developments around the state. So I know that, uh, we've, that you guys have talked.
We've had at least two meetings with uh, developers around the state. And I think um, it'll be uh, um. More meaningful if we can actually say, here, here is some parcel that could potentially be in the mix, you know, so.
Good enough. Okay, good. Awesome.
Got it. All right, uh, correspondence? Public works report, building reports. So we'll get the Mary Jane will try to square the uh, the revenue against that report at some point. Uh, old business?
Um, should we just take this opportunity to once again reiterate the date of the upcoming town meeting?
I think that's a good thing to do. Uh, it is now slated for Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of September. It is at seven o'clock. At the Guilford High School, as opposed to the confusion in the uh, in the, in the last notice. Um, there were several sets of eyes on the, on the notice that was submitted last week for a publication in a newspaper of local circulation. Uh, so we're.
A town meeting, which is resulting in a vote that night.
Right. Where, where residents will be able to share their, share their comments, uh, their insights. Uh, and ask questions about the uh, this project. Uh, and eventually, uh, we'll take a vote at that meeting as well. In-person. In-person voting.
Bring, bring an ID.
Yeah, bring your ID to get checked in by the uh, uh, the registrars and voters, so. But thank you for that, Senator. Uh, any other old business? New business?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that all are new, but.
Yep.
We, we need to um, respond either separately or together to the P O C D questionnaire. We, we need to, um, respond either separately or together to the P O C D questionnaire. And Sandy had, I thought, a great idea of sort of getting together and working on a collective response.
Yeah, uh, we, and we can do it via Zoom or in-person or, or a hybrid, uh, so we'll have, uh. We'll have staff take a look and, and send something out to try to coordinate schedules, that's, thank, thanks for that catch, so. Anything else? Hearing none, public forum, is anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, zero motion. Second?
Second.
This one's, uh, non-debatable, all in favor? Thank, thank you all.